All right, Chair, I think you have a quorum.
Okay.
And it is almost 3 o'clock, and I see both staff presenters.
And could we, hold on just one second to make sure the screen is working.
Is staff ready? Okay. Okay, let's get started. Welcome Planning Commissioners, staff, and public attendants. Our Oregon Revised Statutes 192.640 and 192.670 allow for public bodies to hold meetings via video conferencing. By, I'm sorry, public bodies to hold meetings via means of phone or electronic communications to ensure for public safety but increase participation. Wasco County is elected to hold all public meetings for the near term via video conferencing. Staff has prepared public participation guide that was emailed to anyone that registered as a participant on how to use Zoom software, and it's also available to download or view on Wasco County Planning Commission page. We are also live streaming this via YouTube and on Wasco County website. At this time, could we have the roll call?
Thank you, Chair. A call roll. For the record, I'm Angie Brewer, Wasco County Planning Director. Vicki Ashley.
Present.
Thank you. Brad Dehart. Saw your name.
I'm here.
Thank you. Chair McIntyre.
Present.
Mike Davis. Haven't seen him, absent. Kate Willis.
Present.
Chris Shanna.
Present.
Marcus Swift. And Russ Hargrave. Thank you. We also have staff, let's see, staff, please turn on your cameras and introduce yourself for the record.
Lisa Johnson, Associate Planner.
I'm from Ivy, Associate Planner.
Nancy Smith, Planning Coordinator.
Okay, thank you. This meeting is being recorded and will be publicly available. All participants must mute themselves unless they are speaking. Lines that are providing feedback while not speaking will be muted to ensure that others can hear. Only you can unmute yourself using the mic icon. If you are participating by phone, unmute yourself by dialing *6. Participants behaving inappropriately will be promptly removed from the meeting. And the Chair will specifically invite participants for public comments at the appropriate times in the agenda. So please be patient and wait to be called on. Please refrain from using the comment feature unless directed by the Chair. It will distract from the intended flow of the hearing procedure. At this time, we'll have public comment on items that are not listed on the agenda. If anyone wishes to speak about something that is not on the agenda, you can unmute your mic and then share any comments that you might have for those items not on the agenda. Does anyone have any comments?
Lynn?
Yes.
I didn't hear. That's Hargrave, Mosher.
Thank you, Russ.
And Mike Davis, Ty Valley.
Glad you're here.
Chair, I received an email from Sheila Dooley suggesting she may have comments on items not on the agenda. I see her present. Not sure if you want to call on her specifically just to verify.
Okay, Sheila, are you there?
Yes, I don't have any comments. I just registered that I had comments just so I had the option.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Hearing no other comments for items not on the agenda, we will proceed to the public hearing. We will now open the Planning Commission quasi judicial hearing on Agenda Item 92121000017-PLNG, a conditional use permit for a 1,404 square foot, 52 long by 28 wide by 14 foot high non-farm dwelling to be reviewed through the Planning Commission per request of the applicant. The subject parcel is located on Walters Road approximately a half a mile east of its intersection with Kelly Springs Road and approximately one mile southeast of Pine Grove, Oregon, more accurately described as map tax lot 5S 12 East 3200, account number 13041. The criteria for approval of land use decisions includes Chapter 3 Basic Provisions, Sections 3.215.1, or I, I'm sorry, Non-Farm Dwelling 3.216, Property Development Standards 3.218, Agricultural Protection, and 3.219A Additional Standards, Chapter 5 Conditional Use Review, Chapter 10 Fire Safety Standards, and Chapter 20 Site Plan Review of the Wasco County Ludo. The proposed development must comply with applicable provisions contained in the Wasco County Comprehensive Plan. Generally, unless otherwise noted, if a request is found to be consistent with the Ludo, it is considered consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. The procedure I would like to follow is first disclosure of interest, ex parte contact or potential conflicts. Then the reading of the rules of evidence. Planning Department will then present their report. Then those who wish to speak in favor of the proposal, those who wish to speak in opposition of the proposal, then rebuttal questions by Planning Commission of staff, proponent, or opponent. And then we will close the hearing and record, begin deliberation. And during deliberation, only the Planning Commissioners may talk during that time. So at this time, let's have disclosure of interest, ex parte. Does any Planning Commissioner wish to disqualify themselves for any personal or financial interest in this matter?
I have to admit that I know the parties personally. They've lived here all my life. They've lived there all their life. But I have not, it will not influence my decisions.
Um, okay, thank you, Vicki. Has any Planning Commissioner had any significant ex parte or pre-hearing contacts with the applicants? All right, does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any Planning Commissioner to hear this matter? Hearing none, is there any member of the audience who wishes to question the jurisdiction of this body to act on behalf of Wasco County in this matter? Have any Planning Commissioners, for the record, conducted a site visit to the subject property?
I'm familiar with the area, but not specifically.
Okay, thank you. All right, party recognition. Anyone can speak for or against the proposal today. However, only those who have party status will be able to appeal a decision reached by this commission. A party is defined in Section 1.090 as: A. The applicant and all owners or contract purchasers of record as shown in the files of the Wasco County Assessors Office of the property which the subject, which is the subject of the application. B. All property owners of record as provided in A above within the notification area as described in Section 2.080A2 of the property which is the subject of the application. C. A citizens advisory group pursuant to the Citizen Involvement Program approved pursuant to ORS 197.160. D. Any affected unit of local government or public district or state or federal agency. E. Any other person or his representative who is specifically personally or adversely affected in the subject matter as determined by the approving authority. If you want party status, please say so at the beginning of your testimony. At the end of the public testimony, the Planning Commission will deliberate about granting party status to each person who has requested it. The rules of evidence are as follows. No person shall present irrelevant, immaterial, or unduly repetitious testimony or evidence. Evidence received shall be of a quality that reasonable persons rely upon in the conduct of their daily affairs. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the criteria applicable to the subject, hearing, or to criteria that the party believes apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity may preclude raising it before the Land Use Board of Appeals. Fail to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow Wasco County to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Any party of record may request that the record remain open for at least seven days prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing. Failure of persons to participate in the public hearing either orally or in writing precludes that person's right of appeal to the Board of Commissioners. Written testimony submitted prior to the hearing constitutes participation in the hearing. At this time, I would ask staff to please present their report on this case.
Thank you, Chair. Can everybody see that? Okay, so this is, as mentioned, application number 921-21000017 for Kim and Bill Mead. This is for a conditional use permit for a 1,404 square foot non-farm dwelling to be reviewed through you guys. The location is the north side of Walters Road. It's approximately half a mile from Kelly Springs and about one mile southeast of Pine Grove, Oregon. The property is 10.773 acres and is in the A1 160 Exclusive Farm Use Zone. Here in the orange circle is the subject parcel. It is located close by to Pine Hollow, Sportsman's Park, and Mopin and a few others. So for reference, I put the zoomed out map. Zooming in, you'll see that it's in the intersection of Kelly Springs and Walters Road. So here it is in blue. And the vicinity map indicating the zones of the adjacent parcels. So in the brown hue, that's Exclusive Farm Use Zone. The darker yellow color is RR5 Rural Residential with a five acre minimum. And to the northwest, we have red colors as well. There's one that kind of looks the same color in another red hue. And then the yellow, those are in Pine Grove, Rural Industrial, Rural Commercial, and RR5 as well as RR2. So I'll go ahead and tell you a little bit about the parcel history. It has a bit of a unique history. It was owned by the Wapaneechee Cattle Growers Association as part of a larger 80 acre property consisting of this one and the seven tax lots to the west of it from November 12, 1943 to December 1675. So the blue is the subject parcel and the seven to the west of it will be part of the parcels that we're talking about today. In 1975, it was discovered that an unincorporated association could not hold title to land, and the association decided to divide it amongst its members in parcels ranging from five to 23 acres. Towards that end, in December of 1975, eight deeds were created to give ownership of the Cattle Men's Association to each of the individuals in that association. This created an unlawfully, an unlawful subdivision. Wasco County required land use approval for such land uses starting September 4, 1974. And after 1974, the only way to divide property would have been by the partition or subdivision process. The minimum parcel size of this area at the time was 20 acres. So the subject property would have been too small to be created lawfully. The property in its current configuration was not created by deed prior to September 4, 1974 by partition or by subdivision, so it does not meet the definition of a legal parcel. So since the original division, two adjacent properties have had land use approvals through the Planning Department for a dwelling in 1981, and the other date is indecipherable. But it is assumed that it is before 1981. It was discovered at that time that the parcels were not legal and that they were created by an illegal subdivision. The Planning Department then reached out to the county judge, which was Rick Cantrell, and he advised planners over the phone. A note was written in hand on a letter typed by the then District Attorney indicating that the judge requested for staff to pursue a rezone and a goal exception to create a new rural zone to allow for these properties to be developed. The rezone did not occur, and the Planning Department is unsure as to why. The District Attorney is no longer County Council for land use approval, but we met with our current Council, Chris Crean, and he was supportive of the applicant pursuing a decision directly through the Planning Commission. The decision made by you Commissioners today will not legalize the subject parcel, but will either support staff's recommendation to deny the request or allow for development to occur on the illegally created parcel. So the next couple of slides will be what I was just talking about. So this is the original preliminary partition map, which shows the current configuration as it is today. These are findings from 1981 non-farm dwelling. Here it mentions that the then Wasco County Judge Rick Cantrell provided a letter which was dated October 5, 1979, and that the letter contained a note from the Planning Director Dorothy Brown, which advises that the District Attorney, this property should be treated as a pre-existing non-conforming subdivision. Continuing on, another note from that same staff report. It says, as noted previously in this report, the subject parcel is unique because it is one of eight parcels that ranges in size. And in the staff report, the wording is, says, consider it to be a legal pre-existing non-conforming subdivision, and that as a result of the minimum parcel size in the area, there is no potential for any new similarly sized parcels to be created in the immediate area. This is the note that was written. And then you can see that it is quite indecipherable. We've had quite a few eyes on this memo and what we can read. We believe, it says, District Attorney that the property be treated as a pre-existing non-conforming subdivision. And then the rest is quite indecipherable. But this was a note written by Rick Cantrell, and we believe the penmanship was done by the Planning Director Dorothy Brown. So staff recommends today that you either approve the request with amended conditions and findings, deny the request as we described in the staff report, or continue the hearing to a day and time to allow for additional information to be submitted. So staff recommends to deny the request as described in the staff report. Are there any questions?
Chair, if I might just add one quick summary comment, that the proposed development was found to be consistent with all other applicable criteria and code, and that's contained within the staff report. They also pursued a soils challenge to justify their proposed development, and that was found to be consistent with the state and local regulations. So just want to make sure that was clear for the Planning Commissioners. But Lisa has highlighted sort of the key concern that staff raised in the staff report and recommendation.
Thank you. Any Planning Commissioners have any questions of staff?
This is Commissioner Willis. I did read it. I read a lot of, I read the conditions where it was conforming. I read the history that Lisa has covered. I'm feeling like I need more time to really understand the complexity of this because it has a lot of ins and outs, and it does have this history. So that's where I am right now. I would, I'd like to be able to meet with staff to understand it a little better. And, and I guess maybe one question that could be answered now is, what's the implication of approving with conditions? I guess, could you explain why, why there is even an option of approving with conditions? If it's, if it's not a legally created partition?
Sure, I can, I can take that, Commissioner Willis, thank you. So we, staff fully appreciates sort of the unique history this property has and the properties to the west have, and that past land use approvals have been issued on properties with this same set of circumstances. We sought guidance from County Council for Land Use, Chris Crean, and he, he advised us to bring this to you directly for a more broad scope of discretionary authority. And flagged the, the outcome of this decision, should you all choose to approve the request for the dwelling, it does not legalize the property, but it does verify that it is considered developable in the eyes of the Planning Department and the Planning Commission and generally the county. The lawful, the, whether or not it's consistent with the definition of a lawfully created parcel is something that may require additional legal work on the, on the end of the landowner before anything's conveyed for ownership purposes to any future owners. What they're requesting today is permission to build, essentially. For your, to respond to your question about setting precedent, the circumstances here are unique to this, these eight lots. Certainly, things were created by deed prior to, prior, before and after the Wasco County zoning ordinance of 1974. We come across unlawfully created parcels all the time, unfortunately, and that's something we do our best to work with landowners as they come up. But given the note from the judge, the District Attorney, and past decisions from the Planning Director for Wasco County, we feel like these are unique circumstances that don't set precedent and don't necessarily open the floodgate, if you will, of allowing for unlawful parcels to be developed with residential development at a rural residential density. So staff feels like this is unique. However, staff feels like we are obligated to comply with the current rules and regulations, and that's why we've recommended a denial. But fully appreciate and respect that the Planning Commission does have a more broad scope of discretionary authority and presented it to you all today.
Any further questions, Kate?
Yes, I'm trying to formulate it, thank you, Chair McIntyre. I, was there any guidance on? I know that there weren't any comments received, as far as I could tell, other than from the Roadmaster or from Bradley Cross. I mean, there were, I think there were some other comments from, from a few other folks. But, no, I'm sorry, different hearing, sorry. But is there any indication from any conversations that staff has had about the possibility of an appeal? Or the possibility of, if, if the commission goes another way than, other than staff has recommended? Because it is a unique circumstance, has there been any conversation about that?
Well, we have not heard from anyone voicing significant concern. Lisa, I would defer to you if you have anything in the file that should be flagged for the Planning Commissioners, but I'm not aware of any.
Nothing, as you said, that was significant. There was an email received by an adjacent landowner, but it did not have to do with this particular file. They were curious to see if their property would be developable, and I believe it should be not related.
Okay, thank you.
Any other Commissioners have questions at this time?
Can you hear me?
Did I hear someone say something?
This is Commissioner Willis again. I'm sorry, I'm still just trying to process this and understand it. So the implication, that this, the implication of, of either we agree with staff and we say it's a denial, or we can ask for, we could ask for more time to consider. I'm leaning in that direction, ask for more time to consider. Or, or the implication of, of moving forward on the conditions, staff conditions, would mean that this particular parcel could be developed for this one particular permitted piece. And potentially, it would open up the gate for maybe a few more. But that's all, is that right?
So if the Planning Commission approved the request, as it stands today, it'd be approving the request and signifying that it considers this property
subdividable or?
Oh, wouldn't qualify for subdivision just based on the acreage and the minimum parcel size. But, but developable, right? If someone were to come back later and propose an accessory building or a barn, they would technically have a land use decision on file from the Planning Commission to verify that it is buildable for unique reasons.
I see.
There are several properties, there are two properties in these eight lots that contain dwellings, but several of them are, like Lisa said, have been permitted by the Planning Department for similar reasons with similar language. And it's not clear what, you know, whether or not any additional proposals will be received. You know, we don't, we don't have any way of knowing when those landowners might choose to pursue development on those vacant properties in that, in that, I don't want to call it a subdivision, but that particular area in the near future. But technically, they're, they're all sort of subject to the same set of circumstances. And you would be presented with a similar proposal if they came forward.
Right, okay, thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead, Russ.
Sorry, Mike. So quickly, then, a simple question. But I was just wondering, Lynn, there are eight parcels in this area. Have any of them, to our knowledge, ever requested a dwelling? And either it's been denied or withdrawn?
In my, in my research, the only two parcels have applied for land use development and have been approved for their requests. The other parcels have remained vacant and no requests have been made.
Thanks, Lisa.
Then I have just a short question in that, in regards to the full, the all eight of them. Because all eight of them, seems like it focuses on Judge Cantrell. Because all eight of them, seems like it focuses on Judge Cantel back in the seventies, saying that, hey, this is cool, go ahead and have fun, basically. You know, my short term here. So we're really just looking at these eight lots that has this uniqueness behind it. And we've already have two other lots that has gone through the process and built something on it. And we're not looking at this as, if I'm correct, correct me if I'm wrong, is we're not looking at this as being a subdivision, or they're, they're, we're just looking at it, can they put a resident home on it? And yes, later on, they could put a small building or whatever would be allowed. But all we're doing is just looking at, can they put a residence on it? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I'm grateful, Lisa, you included in your presentation the, the findings from past reports. Just to flag for you all, the past plant, past, past staff reports did go as far as to say they recognized it as a subdivision, but that's quest that's before you today. That's, that's not, that's certainly be up to you if you wanted to add that. But the request today is for the dwelling proposal.
Any other questions from commissioners, comments?
I have one. Lynn, if, so with, are we under the impression, from what I've gathered, that the, the judge had asked that it be recognized, but then it just was never followed through with? Is that what happened? Is that?
That's our understanding, yes.
Is that something we should be taking care of at this point, knowing that that was out there? Or I'm not sure what that actually means or how that is. That's something I've never heard of.
So it looks like from the note, he, that, that the judge requested staff pursue a goal exception to rezone the property or rural residential zoning and honor that subdivision. We couldn't find anything on record that that had been pursued. And we pinged the state, they didn't have anything on record. It's our, it is our hunch that it wasn't pursued because it, it would not have complied. It wouldn't have succeeded. We don't think it would have been successful. And so without knowing, we can't get inside past staff's minds, but we think that may have been what had happened. And certainly, if the board directed us to explore that in the future, that was flagged as a priority for our work plan in some way, we could re-explore that. But the criteria is pretty steep, as y'all know, for a goal exception process. There would have to be some, it would have to comply with current regulations.
And then it also, it also didn't meet the predominantly class seven soil test. Is that right?
They pursued a soils challenge and verified compliance with the, with the soils criteria. They challenged the soils map that contains the percentages you're looking at.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out what it said, but I can't quite, it's, it's pretty hard to make out. So it came out that the, that they, the soil scientists verified the fact that the maps were correct. Is that what I'm understanding?
It was poor soil, Chris. It was poor enough.
Yeah, so, so he, the soil scientists didn't confirm. They just, they, through their analysis, were able to tell that more than 50% of that subject parcel is not suitable for farming, even though our GIS data indicates otherwise. So the, the soil scientist on the ground has determined that it was 50% or more unsuitable for farming.
So if it's predominantly class seven soils, Lisa, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I probably am, but if it's predominantly class seven soils in EFU, doesn't that make it developable or dividable? Or whatever the next move is?
It is one of the criteria for a non-farm dwelling. Yeah.
What are they, is there other criteria it has to meet that it's not meeting? Is it the size is the issue?
The, the only issues for being able to approve a dwelling of any sort is the soils, as well as the legal parcel status. Everything else is in compliance.
Okay, so the only issue then is the fact that it's a non-leal parcel, which they tried to get fixed in 1971 or whatever, and in some reason, it never got followed through?
Correct.
I'm starting to put it together now. I'm just slower than everybody else, sir.
Actually, I have one more question. I'm a little slower than Chris, actually, so. The last question I have is that I heard somebody mention that the only time we're going to get into a potential issue on this is if the lots are sold and it's brought up then. Is that correct? When we're going to have to really buckle down and correct this thing?
So there, there are legal remedies for people who buy properties that are not lawful, lawfully created, don't have legal parcel status verified. There are some, there are some interesting nuances between land use, land use regulations and laws, real estate laws, surveyor laws. And as you can imagine, the way those things feather together is not always super clear. Land, in land use law, we typically sort of say that you, ownership means, right? You can sell anything you want. It can be in any configuration you want. But development is contingent upon its lawful parcel status and whether or not the creation of that property was consistent with the definition of a legal parcel, and you pursued those mechanisms. Real estate law has some, has a slightly different angle on that. I learned recently from our local Realtors Association that they don't believe you're able to sell anything that doesn't comply. But I read the law a little differently. So the, whether or not they, whether or not the needs choose to sell this to someone, they will need to work that out with any buyer as to what the comfort level is with that buyer to ensure that they have covered their legal obligations and any, you know, risk to themselves for selling that.
Yeah, it's an obligation to.
That's separate from the land use process, and they're not, they're not requesting a partition today. It wouldn't comply with the partition regulations. They're requesting confirmation of whether or not this property can be developed and put a house on it for residential purposes. But again, past.
Sorry, Angie, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I was just going to say, again, those past staff reports did flag that the, the Planning Director believed them to be a lawfully, I can't remember the language off the top of my head, but a non-conforming established subdivision. And certainly, if you all felt comfortable adding that today, I, I can't stop, I'm not going to stop you, but that's, that is not the specific request.
In 1971, the county judge saying that these are legally created part, parcels, that is probably enough to have made it go. Is that correct?
So the letter says they should be, and staff should pursue that. And staff didn't pursue it, is the thing. We don't have any record of them fixing it, but we have record that that was the judge's intent. And we have rec, years later, that the district attorney and the planning director tried to carry that intent forward and obligate those properties to that, that direction. But without an actual rezone or a goal exception process, current staff, us, we really don't have anything to lean on, other than the discretionary authority of, of, someone that's not staff. You all on the board, should we?
Well, Vicky was probably on the board back then. You should ask her.
I'm trying. Oh, this is terrible.
It's even better. I can tease Vicky and she can't answer back. This is working out great for me.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, Vicky.
Okay, we, we were, I was on the board when we did a couple of these other requests. We honored the judge's letter, recommendation, whatever. Due to the fact it was a unique process, it was a unique division of land. A group of ranchers didn't know the law, obviously. They didn't know they needed to get it recorded by a certain date. There's very little, as I understand it, possibility for any further subdivision. There would be no, sir. And that we honored the request of the, my new landowners at that time.
Thank you, Vicky.
I'm having trouble with my signal. Keeps going in and out.
Okay, any further planning commissioner discussion at this point? If not, does the applicant and/or their representative wish to present anything further? If so, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, thank you. Bill and Kim Mead, 78901 Victor Road in Mopin, Oregon, 97037.
Okay, would you like to present or?
Yeah, um, like I said, my name is Kim Mead, and I'm a ninth generation resident of Juniper Flat in southern Wasco County. And this is my husband, Bill.
Hello, everybody.
And we would like to begin by thanking all of you for volunteering your time to serve our communities in Wasco County. And we hope that you've had the time to review our application information packet. And we really want to thank Lisa Johnson and Angie Brewer and Will Smith for their hours and hours of work trying to guide us in this process in the proper direction for this unique situation. All five of us have learned that this is very unique and special. We, Lisa, I want to take, thank you for going through the history. And Angie, you've just kind of blown my report and news that I've been practicing for two days out of the water. So in not wanting to reiterate and going through that history, I think it's just important that you understand that everyone at the time truly believed that they were doing the right process. The cattlemen believed that they were going off of the advice of an attorney. The attorney believed that he was properly filing the deeds. The Judge Cantrell believed that he was trying to do what was in the right ways of the cattlemen, along with the DA. It just kind of goes down through generation, generation, generation of everyone doing what they really truly thought was correct. Our parcel is next door to one of the parcels that is developed with a home on it. And then the other one, to the far west, is belong, is with the Thompson family. And in my presentation, I'll get to a very firm statement that the past planning, planning commission director, staff member director, I guess I should say, made. Let's see, I got to skim through my notes because I've got everything crossed off because I didn't want to reiterate things. On January 22nd, 2021, after quite some time of a process, we got an email from planning staff inviting us to attend a video meeting. And in doing so, we sat down with them and found this meeting to be extremely helpful and very encouraging to us in learning what our next steps needed to be. And we cannot reiterate enough how kind and helpful both staff members were in that and helping us to try and figure out what our path needed to be to go forward to succeed. So here we are now, today, presenting this case before you. We already believe that Wasco County Planning and Development Office has already done the lion's share of the work for us. The conditional use permit 96-127-WAA12-A makes a very strong argument, and it provides findings and ultimately makes a valid determination that the lots comprising the subdivision along Walters Road are legal, non-conforming parcels. So that was in the Wasco County Planning Department's report. The Planning Department specifically provided findings regarding legal parcel in the 1996 conditional use permit. And those findings were necessary in making the decision to review and ultimately approve the request. There was a decision made and an appropriate appeal period was provided. And if the decision was not successfully appealed, then the decision and the findings necessary in making that decision is final. Wasco County Planning Department conducted a thorough legal parcel research associated with the 1996 Thompson's conditional use permit. And we have the deeds, the letter from the attorney that Lisa has shown you suggesting the property should be split, and the permit from the director of the Wasco County Planning Department stating that the subdivision should be a legal parcel and is in fact a legal parcel once the appeal period ended. We're, we're just here to request that you honor past actions and agree that this situation is very unique and applies to the one last parcel of the original Cattlemen's Association property. We are requesting equity and fairness by acknowledging the property as lawful and buildable by decisions that were made at the time and recognized by a Wasco County judge, district attorney, and former landowners. I think, Angie, I think that you had stated that it can't be created a legal parcel. Is that correct? But it can be requested to have a lawful and buildable parcel?
So the request is not for a partition to recognize it as lawful, but the Planning Commission could certainly make a finding similar to that of past staff reports that, that sort of agrees with past determinations of the, of the sort of non-conforming status of the lawfully established, non-conforming status of the subdivision and the, and the way in which it was created. Because certainly, I agree with past acknowledgements, but, but the proposed development does not include a new partition. And so there is no, there is no request to create a new property today. It would simply be to recognize the status of the current property, whatever the planning, wherever the Planning Commission wants to land with that. Is that, is that clear as mud? Does that make sense? I'm sorry for.
We've learned that a lot of your guys' lingo is not very clear to us common folk. We're hoping that you understand that within one mile of this property that we're discussing, there are 20-plus homes on parcels of land ranging anywhere from one to 40 acres. And so one more house with similar sized properties in the area will not be a detriment. We have spent a lot of money to confirm the soil issues. That would be a good gig if any of you are looking for a nice income. And we're requesting that you approve a non-farm dwelling by acknowledging and recognizing the unique methodology and procedures used in dealing with this property. And we thank you again for your time, and we would be happy to address any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Does any planning commissioner have any questions for the applicants?
This is Brad. Chair, I do, just, out of curiosity, how long, Kim and Bill, how long have you owned the property?
Well, my grandfather was one of the original cattlemen that the property was deeded to. And my first husband and I purchased it from my grandmother in 2008.
Okay.
And then, excuse me, I'm so sorry, 1994, I became the sole owner in 2008.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from planning commissioners?
Chair McIntyre, may I make an addition or piggyback on what Kim was saying? So Angie, this might derail a bit, but if we, if we, so there was an ORS that changed a few years ago indicating that if planning approval was done on a parcel, it would then recognize the parcel as a legally created lot. So would that be the case here?
I'm sorry, Lisa, I'm not sure what you're referring to, but if the commission wanted us to look into that, we could, we could recommend a continuation.
Could I, this is Commissioner Willis. I, Lisa, I believe I know what you're talking about, because I, I think there was, I do think we should research it, but my recollection is that right around that time, there was a, something that was passed in the legislature to grandfather in and try to clean up some of the, some of the partitions, or some of the parcels that were not legally created, because it had just come to, you know, it just, is that the one you're talking about, Lisa? I believe that's it.
I believe so. I can't recall the, the number of the ORS, but I believe that if planning approval is granted, the parcel historically was still an illegal parcel. But because of the change, I believe it to be that if planning approval is given, it then makes the parcel. But because of the change, I believe it to be that if planning approval is given, it then makes the parcel legal.
So if I could just interject here, I'm, I'm a little concerned we're getting, our hearings losing some focus, but I do want to say that the only mechanism I'm aware of is if it, if it would have complied with the laws in effect at the time that it was created, there is a process to rectify that. But we don't believe that to be the case. The minimum parcel size was still larger than the property is today. So we would be happy to look into more, more statute if you would like us to, but I don't, I don't feel comfortable discussing an ORS that we don't have a reference for, for the particular request on the table. I just want to throw that wrench into that gear real quick.
Thank you, Angie. Um, planning commissioners have any other questions for the applicants? If not, are there any persons who wish to speak in favor of the request? If so, please state your name and address for their record. Limit your comments to criteria that are applicable to the request.
Um, yes, I would like to, to speak on behalf of the Meads. My name is Gary Nijack. Uh, my address is three seven State Liberty Square in Fort Myers, Florida. Area code three, three, nine, zero, eight. Just to give you a little bit of background on who I am, I worked for Wasco County Planning Department for a few years. I was a senior planner from two thousand and six through two thousand and twelve. Acted as an interim director for a few year, a couple of years. So that's how I'm related to Wasco County. I'm also related to the Meads. Kim Mead is my wife's cousin. They share a maternal grandfather, Ernie Endersby, uh, who was one of the deed recipients of that property back when it was created. Um, I am speaking more personally than professionally here, but I would like to say that, that when I was at Wasco County, the non-legal parcel issue was always difficult. Finding remedies to those non-legally created parcels should be high, high on your list when, when you can, when you can get that done. Because non-legal parcels, there's so much confusion that, that carries on throughout the years, year after year on what you can do with a piece of property and what you cannot. So any, any avenue that we can follow to pursue that would be, would be really handy. Secondly, the, the dwelling, there's been a lot of information that was compiled that states that the, the property that they're using is not really farmland. It is in the exclusive farming zone. It is in the, the A two zone right now. But the, the, the property itself hasn't been used for farming from what I've seen since maybe the forties or the seventies, depending on those documents that the Meads submitted to you. The, the, it's just not suit, well-suited for that. I think it would be beneficial for Wasco County and of course the Meads for the planning commission to make that decision to put in writing that yes, this is a, an approved dwelling that the, the request that the Meads put forth complies with all of the regulations of the planning commission except for legal parcel. Uh, that's an important note to make. Ms. Brewer said that at the beginning that this is, indeed, this request complied all the regulations that they put forward except for the legal parcel. And the legal parcel, uh, it, it should be noted that the Cattlemen's Association didn't choose to create this parcel. They were advised to create this parcel. Uh, they, uh, an attorney from the Dows, from the Dows, Oregon, suggested that they needed to sell those lots off. And that letter was dated after the nineteen seventy four date. So if the Cattlemen's Association should, knew or should have known, then clearly Dick and Dick attorneys in the Dows, Oregon should have known that you can't move forward with, with creating that new parcel without the, the plating process that was approved in nineteen seventy four. The Cattlemen's Association put forth a lot of effort to follow the rules that were put before them. It's evident in the, in the record and Wasco County Planning Staff has done a great job at compiling this stuff. And you can, I can tell that they're, they're right there following the law. There's no question. They're following the law and they're to a point where they don't feel that they can't approve it. And those are my words, no one else's. And I think that's why they're elevating this to planning commission to give you a little bit more latitude where they don't necessarily have.
Uh, does, does anyone have any questions for Gary, planning commissioners?
Okay, this, this Commissioner Willis, okay, so I, I, I don't have a question. I'm just trying to recap and summarize what are we weighing here? That's, I'm just trying to process, what are we weighing? So if I'm understanding this correctly, we are weighing that, that this property would not have been even under, at the time that it was being done, it would not have been, it could, it wouldn't have been permitted at the time. But for equity reasons and for other reasons, we have the discretion in this very limited case to try to reconcile across a very limited number of the, the last remaining lot for, for basically reasons that were, would not have been approved even at the time, let alone today. Is, is that the decision that we're making? It feels like that's the decision we're making.
Yes, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Angie, but I think that the division process was started before the zoning change went into effect. Is that, is that correct?
Certainly the conversation at the Cattlemen's Association started right around the same time, the rules. And like they shared, they did seek the advice of a, a legal counsel to make sure they were doing everything properly. There was a lot of land use regulations coming online in the early seventies, as you can imagine, following Senate Bill one hundred and the new land use regulations. So it is not lost on staff that there was a lot of movement in the rules that applied to private property owners and keeping track of all of those things at that time was a lot for anyone.
I do remember some of the stuff that my father was on the planning commission at that time. And I do remember a lot of conversations and I remember when he was talked about the Cattlemen's Association dispersing property and the whole thing. So there was a lot of confusion at that time, but going back to at least his comment too is that I think it's nineteen seventy five was the sort of this cutoff date as well. And I think that was some of the pressure that, that Judge Cantrell was, was under also. And everybody was trying to clean up. The Dick and Dick Brothers handled a lot of the, of the contracts out here and all the land use out here. They certainly did all the Pine Hollows. And so they were very, they're very, you know, knowledgeable. And it was just a part of a cleanup act, I think.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the request? If there are no other persons wishing to speak in favor of the request, are there any persons who wish to speak in opposition to the request? If so, please state your name and address for the record and please limit your comments to criteria that are applicable to the request. Does the applicant and their representative wish to say anything further at this time or rebut anything that has been said?
Nope.
Was that a no?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that was a no.
Does the planning commission have any other questions at this time for anyone, staff or applicants? If anyone, okay, no, that didn't happen. If there is no further testimony or questions at this time, last chance. The public hearing is closed and the planning commission will enter into deliberation. So planning commissioners, this is your time to ask any further questions. If you have any comments, now would be the time.
As I'm understanding it, the, if it weren't for the legal creation of the partition, that's the only thing that's holding up the, the approval of the permitting. Is that right, Lisa? So they meet setbacks, they meet everything that needs to be met. The problem is, is the parcel wasn't legally created, possibly.
That is correct.
And I have the question right, right to that. The only reason why we say it's not legally done is even though that the judge said, do it, is done, is the connection between that letter, that statement to say, let's go for this and make it legal to that it wasn't actually formally done. Is that correct?
That is correct. However, I'm planning department now currently believes it probably wasn't pursued because it wouldn't have achieved the minimum parcel sizes of twenty acres. And the parcels as they were divided are from five to twenty-three acres. Um, but past staff reports indicate that they were five to twelve acres. So I don't believe that any of them would have complied and therefore been able to go through a subdivision process.
Yeah.
Unless they went to a rezone, which.
I don't think today, back then in the seventies, I remember even my dad was pushing ten acres through the commissioners around the Pine Hollow area. Okay. So I think there's a tremendous, between today, it's much more formalized and it's much more detailed and much word. Back in those days, we were just getting off of a handshake and getting something on a, on paper. And, and everybody was trying to use just personal logic, you could say, to this, which got us into where we are, where we have all these small partials and we have a different problem now going on because we're form, more formalized with it. I think that in this particular case, that you're, two things. One is that we have, we have a uniqueness here that there really is a letter from Judge Cantrell back then that actually says, you know, let's look at it this way. And we also have two other lots that have buildings on it. You know, so I'm looking at this thing saying, look, you know, we've got bigger problems than this when we want to open the can of worms up on all these, the illegal partials, you could say, and what to do with them. I think that's for a different subject. I think we open up now, we're going to stagnate and stop any things. I think we should approve it as it is. Allow these people to, we need housing and allow these people to build their home on it. Look at these little eight lots as, yes, it's unique. Yes, it's done. Let's let them, let them do it so we can go on and really look at the wholeness or the more, the, the, the greater problem of smaller illegal lots that we're going to have to face again and again and again. And we're going to have to, and we're not going to have these letters from judges and all that. So my feeling is, hey, this is to me, plain straight thing. You know, yes, if we want to take the legal specific ground, you, the, the, the staff had to recommend not approving it because you can't tie it together. But I think that they're giving us an opportunity to say, look, the reasonability to this thing is let's approve this thing. And it's only these little eight lots, you already got two people billing on it. And, and it's, this, let's get this thing done for them. But, and so we can put our efforts in to these other things. I don't want our staff to start burning time up over and over and over again when we have such a good connection. So my vote is let's let them have it.
Hey, Mike, thank you. Any, any other comments or concerns by planning commissioners? If not.
Chair.
Yes.
I, I would recommend that Lisa pull up the slide from past staff reports with that language, the specific language about the subdivision status. Just to have in front of the planning commissioners, should you guys choose to use similar lunch, be helpful to be consistent.
I believe it said that it was to be considered a non-conforming, non-conforming lot, non-conforming lots or something to that effect.
Lisa, are you able to pull up that slide? Thank you.
I mean, normally in a, in a normal, non-conforming lot of record situation, it's easier to grant people the ability to build on them as long as it meets some basic criteria. And it looks like that was what the judge was trying to say is that yes, they're, they don't meet the current criteria, but they did at the time that they were being divided or that discussion was occurring. So, okay, Lisa, did you want to pull that up?
I'm thinking specifically the old, the old staff report language that was highlighted and the next one with the red asterisks, asterisk.
Yes. Well, it's to be considered a legal pre-existing, non-conforming subdivision. Okay.
So Angie, are you suggesting that we, if we approve it, we put some other language in here?
Let, let's, let's have a, at this time, let's talk about motion. So the first option is to approve the request with conditions and amended findings. And the conditions are stated in the report that staff has laid out. B is to either request as described in the staff report or C, if additional information is needed to continue the hearing to a date in time certain to allow the submittal of additional information. So if your inclination is to approve, then that would be motion A.
So I'll make a motion to approve as indicated in the staff report. Option A.
I second.
Further discussion?
Um, Commissioner, Commissioner Willis, I just want to point a clarification and I know, I believe it's in the report, but this is all conditioned on the limited scope of approval as stated in the report from staff. My understanding is that it is definitely limited. So is that correct?
Could, could I, as a commissioner, go, go ahead, of course, Angie, but I just wanted to share with with Kate or Kathleen how I look at it. So, um, what we're not doing is changing the zoning. And as a result of the A one sixty zoning, you couldn't create a lot of this size. And, uh, so we're not changing the fundamental rules at all.
We're not changing that, Russ. We are approving for a dwelling and the dwelling is only for, it could really, these, this could only apply.
Yeah, sure, sure. But there's two things we're not doing. One is changing the zoning and I, I, I don't think that would be successful, frankly, uh, or a good idea. And we're not even, if I understand it right, of making this a legal lot. What we are doing is saying that the planning commission believes that it is okay to put a dwelling on it. That's all we're saying. So I think your question was around precedent. And I feel comfortable moving forward with this. Because we're not setting a precedent outside of this eighty acres in these, these eight lots. We are following the precedent that's been set by the previous two planning department decisions for this area. But I see this decision or the, the motion that's on the table as staying well within that boundary that's already been set and the scope only applying to these parcels. So that's just my input and Angie, please, please go ahead.
Thank you. So the zoning is not on, that's not an option on the table for this particular discussion. This is, this would not be a, a sufficient process to make that change. But what, what I think the distinguishing characteristic here is me, and maybe to Commissioner Willis's comment and question is whether or not you would like staff to change the finding on page thirteen of the packet, thirteen of seventy-seven, it's page P C one dash eight and nine, there is a finding that concludes it is not a legal parcel. If you would like staff to make a change to that finding to be consistent with the language used in past staff reports, the one that Lisa pulled up a few minutes ago, that would be something that. That would be something that you would, I, I would recommend you specifically acknowledge in it with a friendly amendment to your motion. That you are pursuing an approval with an amendment to the findings that makes it consistent with those past staff reports. That would just be a, a recommendation for consistency and a fairly clean path forward.
Okay. How do we, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Kate.
So we have a motion, we have a second, and now the idea is that we could potentially amend that to be consistent with prior findings.
And I think that we'd have to vote, we'd have to have two votes and one on the amendment to the motion and then the motion.
Is that correct, Angie?
I think that you can do it two different ways, the chair is yours, but you, we could do it that way if you'd prefer.
Well, my understanding is the, the motion was to approve the request with the conditions stated in the report. And amended findings. That was what A is. And so those amended findings would be. What was just stated and that it's a unique circumstances.
That's clear to staff.
We just need a single vote then, right?
Yes, yes. So, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Same sign? Motion carried. The application to, uh. Construct a dwelling on this parcel is approved. And that concludes this hearing.
Thank you, Chair. We'll, we'll try to have that out, uh, this Thursday. And there will be an appeal period attached to that, but I appreciate your time this evening for that and appreciate the needs attendance.
Uh, okay. The appeal period is 12 days. From the date of the mailing and will expire at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, June 15th. For ORS 197.830, if no appeal is filed, the decision of the planning commission on this matter is final. Okay.
We just thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. Okay, at this time, we will open the hearing. Planning Commission quasi judicial hearing on the agenda item 921-2100009. Dash PLNG, a subdivision to create 44.38 acre parcel into eight lots. Ranging from five to 8.35 acres and one 1.08 acre park. The subject property is located along the east side of Womack Market Road with Immigrant Street. Running along the entirety of the northern property line. And Homestead Road running along the entirety of the southern property line within the unincorporated community of Womack. This is approximately nine miles northwest of the city of Mopin, Oregon, more accurately described as MAP Tax Lot 4S. 12 East, 14 200, account number 11457. The criteria for approval of the land use decision includes chapter two, development approval procedures. Review criteria, chapter three, basic provisions, section 3.650, Womack Residential. R2 Zone, section 3.654, uses permitted, subject to standard subdivision. Section 3.656, property development standards, chapter 10, fire safety standards. Chapter 21, land division, section 21.030. Basic provisions and design standards, section 21.200, preliminary subdivision plan approval. Proposed development must comply with applicable provisions contained in the Wasco County Comprehensive Plan. Generally, unless otherwise noted. If a request is found to be consistent with the LUTO, it is considered consistent with the comprehensive plan. The procedure we will follow is first disclosure of interest, ex parte contact or potential conflicts. Reading of the rules of evidence, planning department will present their report. Those who wish to speak in favor of the proposal, then those who wish to speak in opposition of the proposal. Rebuttal, questions by planning commission of staff proponent or opponent. And then close the hearing and record and begin deliberation. So at this time, does any planning commissioner wish to disqualify themselves for any personal or financial interest in the matter? Does any planning commissioner wish to report any significant ex parte or pre-hearing contacts? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any planning commissioner to hear this matter? Is there any member of the audience who wishes to question the jurisdiction of this body to act on behalf of Wasco County in this matter? For the record, have any planning commissioners conducted a site visit to the subject property? Okay. Party recognition, anyone can speak for or against the proposal today. However, only those who have party status will be able to appeal a decision reached by this commission. A party is defined in this section 1.090 as. A, the applicant and all owners or contract purchasers of record. As shown in the files of Wasco County Assessor's Office of the property, which is the subject of the application. B, all property owners of record as provided in A above. With the notificationary as described in section 2.080A2 of the property, which is the subject of the application. C, a citizen advisory group pursuant to the citizen involvement program approved pursuant to ORS 197.160. D, any affected unit of local government or public district or state or federal agency. E, any other person or his representative who is specifically personally or adversely affected in the subject matter. As determined by the approving authority. If you wish to have party status, please say so at the beginning of your testimony. At the end of the public testimony, the planning commission will deliberate about granting party status to each person who requested it. The rules of evidence are as follows. No person shall present irrelevant, immaterial or unduly repetitious testimony or evidence. Evidence received shall be of a quality that reasonable persons rely upon in the conduct of their daily affairs. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the criteria applicable to the subject hearing. Or to the criteria that the party believes apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity may preclude raising it before the land use board of appeals. Failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity. To allow Wasco County to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in court. Any party of record may request that the record remain open for at least seven days. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing. Failure of persons to participate in the public hearing, either orally or in writing, precludes that person's right of appeal to the Board of Commissioners. Written testimony submitted prior to the hearing constitutes participation in the hearing. This time, will staff please present the report?
Thank you, Chair McIntyre, and thank you commissioners, uh, for being here today. Um, this one will hopefully be a little less complex. Um, uh, this is a preliminary subdivision review. Uh, we have not had one of these in a while, so it's, uh, pretty exciting to get it before you folks. I'm going to share my screen one second. All right, can you see that? Okay. So the, uh, application number is state is 9212100009 PLNG. Uh, the applicant is Austin Justiceon and the owners are Johnny and Fred Justiceon, which I believe Austin and John are, uh, in attendance today. I'm not sure Fred was on there. I, I thought I maybe saw him. Um, but it is a subdivision to divide a 44.38 acre parcel into eight lots ranging from five to 8.35 acres. And one 1.08 acre park. Uh, the subject property is zone Womack Residential, WAMR2. Uh, neighboring lots and parcels to the north are zone, uh, WAMR2 as well. Uh, parcels to the east and south are in the exclusive farm use zone. And parcels to the west are in the Womack Residential 5 Zone. Uh, slopes in the northern portion of the parcel are north facing an average approximately 30 to 40%. Uh, the southern portion of the subject parcel is generally flat with an average of 10, 10% slopes. Okay. And so here is a vicinity map for you folks. As you can see, it's, uh, to the south of Immigrant Street. Uh, do you folks need me to zoom in on that at all? I'm not hearing anything, so I'll keep it where it is. Um, it's to the south of Immigrant Street and north of Homestead Road. Um, both are public roads. Uh, Homestead Road is having a new section dedicated that will connect it to Womack Market Road. Uh, it's not part of this application, it's part of a separate process. Um, through a road dedication that'll be approved by the board. Uh, the subdivision is, uh, preliminary subdivision is being approved first as staff believes this is the best process for all of it to follow. And. All right, so here is a snapshot of the preliminary plat for the subdivision. As you can see, lots one through seven on the south, southern portion of it. Uh, lot eight up to the north and the park in the northeast corner of the proposed subdivision. All right, so. Uh, it's permitted subject to type two review in accordance with the underlying zoning, the proposed subdivision is being reviewed, subject. Subject, sorry, lost my place, uh, is being reviewed and the applicant will apply again for approval from the planning commission. On the final subdivision plat. Uh, so there are two steps to this process. There's the preliminary review. Uh, which you folks are going through right now. Uh, and then there is the final subdivision plat approval, which we are, once the applicant. Uh, puts together a final plat, uh, for you folks to review, then they will be back for that as well. Uh, so it is a two-step process. Uh, covering the property development standards for the zoning. Uh, since the newly proposed lots will not be served by either an approved community municipal or public water system. Or an approved community or public sewage system, the properties are required to be at least five acres in size. Uh, with a minimum width of 300 feet. The lots must also demonstrate that they can meet DEQ standards, uh, onsite sewage disposal rules in effect. Uh, staff has recommended a condition of approval stating that proof of this shall be provided prior to submitting the final subdivision plat for approval. Uh, the next section that is applicable is the fire safety standards, uh, specifically the fire safety mitigation plan. Which is required for all of our land divisions. Uh, the, uh, the subdivision was reviewed to ensure it met the required fire safety standards, which it did. Uh, there's chapter 21 land divisions, which I'm going to cover, but what I want to do is cover some of the specific criteria. Uh, where staff has, uh, conditioned, uh, certain items. Uh, that are a little specific and, uh, noteworthy for the commission. Um, the first one is subsection L of 21.030. It states whenever existing streets adjacent to or within a tract or inadequate width. Additional right of way shall be provided at the time of subdivision or partic, uh, partitioning. Um, in, in coordination with Arthur Smith, Director of the Wasco County Public Works Department. It was determined that the number of lots and parcels served by Immigrant Street and Homestead Road would generate 25 to 250 annual daily trips. Uh, classifying them both as rural local roads. Uh, condition is recommended, uh, requiring that each road meet the standards identified in table 21-1, uh, which is on the screen there. Uh, Arthur Smith also commented that both roads would not be maintained by the county. Uh, to address this, staff included a condition stating that any improvements will be the responsibility of the applicant. And that a plan for road maintenance will be developed prior to submittal of the final subdivision plat. Uh, the next criterion we'll cover is, uh, subsection O, pedestrian lanes. And it states when desirable for public convenience, pedestrian ways may be required to connect to cul-de-sacs or to pass through unusually long or oddly shaped blocks. Uh, since the applicant has proposed a park in the northeast, northeastern corner of the subdivision. Uh, if approved, it would only be accessible from Immigrant Street. Uh, if landowners along Homestead Road wish to access the park by foot. Uh, they would need to walk out along Womack Market Road, which is a heavily trafficked county road. And could potentially be dangerous for foot traffic traveling to and from the park. Uh, to ensure public safety, staff has recommended a condition stating. Uh, that when the final subdivision plat is submitted for approval by the Wasco County Planning Commission. An adequate pedestrian way shall be included from Homestead Road to the proposed park. Uh, allowing the owners within the lower portion of the subdivision to safely access the proposed park. Uh, the plat shall identify the responsible party for maintaining the pedestrian way. And confirm that the responsible party is not Wasco County. Uh, this condition was included, uh, uh. You know, in spite of there being the next condition related to the park. Uh, so if you have any questions about this, feel free to ask me later on. Uh, the next criterion is subsection Y, uh, it's public open space. Uh, it states elementary and high school sites, neighborhood playgrounds, parks and recreation areas. Shall be located in accordance to the development pattern of the county or the county area. When such public school or recreation sites are within the area of an approved subdivision. Uh, they may be dedicated to the county or shall be reserved until such time as the county is able to acquire them. Parks and recreation areas shall be provided at the rate of one acre of recreation area to every 100 people. Uh, in response to this, uh, the app, you know, the applicant did propose a 1.8 acre park. Within the preliminary subdivision plan, uh, the area of the county, the proposed subdivision will occur. Uh, is within the jurisdiction of South Wasco Parks and Recreation District. Uh, staff contacted SWPRD, uh, regarding the proposal. And the following comments were provided in a letter after a board hearing was held on May 4th, 2021. Uh, the comments state, because Wasco County does not have a parks department, nor any. Personnel or funds designated for park development or park maintenance in the Womack area. Nor at any other location in South Wasco County, with the exception of the Wasco County Fairgrounds in Thai Valley. Uh, therefore, uh, the SWPRD board recommends that the Wasco County Planning Commission. Require that the developers of the Pine Ridge subdivision paid Wasco County. A sum equal to six and two thirds percent of the assessed value of the proposed subdivision. As required by ordinance, rather than requiring the donation of land to potentially be used for a park. Additionally, SWPRD board asked that the funds paid to Wasco County by the developer of the Pine Ridge subdivision. Be donated to SWPRD because as stated above. Wasco County does not have funds or personnel dedicated to recreation in South Wasco County. And SWPRD has a proven track record of providing recreational services in Wasco County. So the criterion that they are specifically referring to. This is what is going to be under review for the next part, for the final subdivision plat approval. This is not currently under review, but I wanted to include it for you folks. Just to reference from South Wasco Parks and Recreation District's comments. Um, G states parks, playgrounds and recreational areas, the approving authority may require parts, playground. playgrounds or recreational areas to be provided in the final subdivision plan and dedicated to the county and locations and of size indicated by the comprehensive plan for the area in which the subdivision is located. Subsection H states recreational fund where no park, playgrounds or recreational areas are required by the commission. The subdivider shall pay to the county a sum equal to six and two thirds percent of the assessed value of the land area exclusive of streets within the subdivision. Such some shall be paid to the county clerk prior to recording of the final subdivision plan and such some shall be held by him in a special fund for acquisition and development of parks, playgrounds and recreational areas within the immediate area of the subdivision. Please ignore the pronoun. It's, this is a older criteria that hasn't been updated for a little bit, obviously. The last section that the application was reviewed in accordance with was section twenty one point two hundred preliminary subdivision plan approval where it met the design standards for that section. All other comments from public agencies were included in the staff or staff summary. And they were included at the end of the document as well for you folks to review. Staff recommends to approve the preliminary subdivision plan as submitted by the applicant to subdivide the forty four point three eight acre parcel into eight lots ranging from five to eight point three five acres with the condition that the park be removed from the plan and the acreage added into the adjacent lots. Are there any questions from you folks?
Planning Commissioners, questions? I have one. So they all have to submit a plan for road maintenance prior to final plat approval. What might that plan? Or how might that maintenance be funded? Would, is, is the applicant able to put establish a homeowners association and those homeowners pay into that maintenance fund or what are, what are the kind of options available for maintenance?
Potentially. Homeowners Association is, is one route that they could go. It's really the intention of that criteria or that condition is to leave it open for them to be creative in how they propose that. We will be sending it to Arthur Smith, the Public Works Director for final approval. And any recommendations that he may have. But the intention of that condition was to allow them to be creative in how they would choose to maintain those roads.
One of the issues I've always found is that even when homeowners associations are created, the homeowners often aren't aware perpetually and down the road of their responsibilities. So finding the mechanism to be able to ensure that perpetuity and funding for maintenance is, is a big question.
Right, right.
Planning Commissioners, any questions? If not, does the applicant and or the representative wish to present anything further or provide any comments?
Nope.
Go ahead, Austin.
I don't think so.
I'm Kurt Fallon. I'm working with other tennis and engineering staff and then also the Justiceons on this application. I mostly have questions. A couple of questions about the staff report.
Hey Kurt, can you state your address for the record as well?
Yeah, so ours is three seven seven five Crate Way in the Nals.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks Brent. Yeah, Brent answered most of our questions. It sounds like specifically the requirement about the parks fee. That's not under review right now. Can you guide us a bit more about what that process looks like? Especially what calculating the payment would be if that payment's already been, or if that sum has already been calculated or not?
The sum has not been calculated. We, we haven't coordinated with the assessor yet. Since this is a bit of preliminary work, you know, staff recognizes that any subdivision is a lot of work and it's a lot of money and it's a lot of time. So that's kind of why it's broken into two different portions, the preliminary portion and then the final portion. The, the intention would be, once the preliminary portion is approved, once we are, once we receive a, a final plat for submittal, at that time, that is when we would be going to the assessor to figure out how much that amount exactly would be.
And when would that need to be paid? I guess, would that be paid immediately before being able to proceed? Or could it be paid as the lots are sold?
That is a good question. Let's go back.
I, so Brent noted this earlier, that subdivisions are rare for us. I would imagine that would be a condition of approval. And that would be bound by the timelines of conditions in the report.
It states halfway through that such some shall be paid to the county clerk prior to recording of the final subdivision plan and such, such some shall be held by him. So it would need to be received prior to filing the final subdivision plan.
Got it. Thank you. Um, let's see, on the page, condition eight, so obviously, like you said, if we don't have the park, we don't need a walking path to our, our non-park. That's clear. On condition twelve, I wanted to double check. Does it mean that there would have to be individual, the wells would have to be drilled prior to filing the final plat or is that acknowledging that that will happen?
Condition twelve, let me, let me get into. Are you folks still able to see the slide right now?
Yep.
Okay, let me get into the staff report real quick and I'll be able to answer that for you.
Thanks.
It's going to take a little bit to load. Can you, can you read it off for me, Kirk?
Yeah, sorry, that would make way more sense. Yeah, prior to approval of the final subdivision plat by the planning commission, the location of the water supply for each parcel shall be identified on the face of the plat. Location of these water sources type and any distribution line should also be illustrated on the face of the plat. A statement from an authorized representative of DEQ or the county sanitarian should also be provided regarding the approval of each lot or parcel to be sold or installation of the septic tank facilities.
Gotcha. Okay, so that, I, I do not believe it's stating that it needs to be installed prior to, it just needs to receive approval. Approval and be identified on the face of the plat where it would be located. I can find the specific criteria that that's in relation to, if you give me one second.
That sounds, right now that I've read that again, that sounds, that makes sense.
Okay. Okay.
And then just, I think my last question here, unless the Justins have anything else, is just wondering about Immigrant Street. That didn't come up in any of our earlier meetings and just wondering what changed around that. I guess seeing your, the last criteria you brought up, that does seem, that does seem rather clear. Was that just something we hadn't looked at until recently?
Correct. Yeah, and prior to the application, staff hadn't visited Immigrant Street. We did about a month ago and noticed that it could potentially be undersized. Staff isn't entirely sure, but just to make sure that it met the criteria, we included that condition stating that it needed to meet the criteria in that table.
And is what you're saying is it might currently, we're not sure.
It could potentially. I'm not entirely sure of the size or right of way width for it. I think it would, if anything, it would end up being the right of way width. And making sure that it's improved up to county standard.
Not necessarily the road width.
Right.
Yeah.
So, can you guys hear me?
Who do we have? Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Austin Justiceon, eight one four nine one Fairgrounds Road, Ty Valley, Oregon.
Does he have your permission, Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So the, Immigrant Street, there's just the one lot that touches that.
Okay. Do you mean the, so the subject, yours, your, the Justiceon property, is that what you're referring to? I think we might have lost you unless you muted yourself, Austin.
Sorry, I've never done this before.
That's okay.
Anyway. So there's one lot, the subdivision, that touches Immigrant Road. We were under the, we were under the impression that we were going to build the road up above to service the five acre lots. The stuff down below along Immigrant Road that already services, I don't know, there's got to be three or four houses down there. Our subdivision touches it in one spot, just one lot.
Correct. Well, it would all, well, as proposed, it would be the park, but with staff's condition, it would only end up being one property. But going back to this slide, one of the criterion, and this is for any of our land divisions, including partitions as well, not just subdivisions. But it states, whenever existing streets adjacent to or within a tract or inadequate width, additional right of way shall be provided at the time of subdivision or partitioning. So the condition is primarily asking that, hey, if this road is substandard, which it may not be, but if it is, then it needs to come up to county standard.
Yeah, that's what I was, sounded like maybe you guys were hitting that it wasn't up to, up to standards. So that's what I was curious about.
Right, and it, it may be, but as a precautionary measure, we included a condition to ensure that it would meet.
Okay, and when is, is the road boss going to go out there and make a determination on that?
It'll be the responsibility of the applicant will most likely be reaching out for comment from the Public Works Director. But I don't believe that Immigrant Street is a county maintained road. I believe it's, it's a private, it's a public road of private access that's maintained by private landowners, which Homestead Road would end up being as well. So we would be reaching out for comment, but I don't believe he would be going out to verify it. It would be the responsibility of the applicant and the subdivider to meet that standard.
Okay.
And the applicant's responsibility to determine whether or not it already meets that standard or not. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, yeah.
Any other questions, Kirk or Austin?
I think that was it for me. Thank you.
That's it for me.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Does the Planning Commission have any questions for the applicant or the representative? No questions? Are there any persons who wish to speak in favor of the request? If so, please state your name and address for the record and limit comments to criteria that are applicable to the request. Okay. Are there any persons who wish to speak in opposition to the request? If so, please state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to criteria that are applicable to the request. Okay. Does the Planning Commission have any other questions for anyone? There's no further testimony or questions. The public hearing will be closed, is closed, and the Planning Commission will now enter into deliberation. Planning Commissioners, any comments, questions? Thank you, Brent.
Thank you, Chair.
If there's no discussion or questions, then I'll go over the motions. We can approve the preliminary subdivision plan as submitted by the applicant to subdivide the forty four point three eight acre parcel into eight lots ranging from five to eight point three five acres with the condition that the park be removed from the plan and acreage added into the adjacent lots. Or approve the request with amended conditions and findings or deny the request with amended conditions and findings. Have a motion, please.
I move that we approve as the first one, section A, approve it as it is.
Okay, do I have a second?
Christian, I'll second.
Further discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carried. Preliminary plan is approved to, to subdivide the forty three, forty four point three eight acre parcel into eight lots ranging from five to eight point three five acres with the condition that the park be removed from the plan and acreage added into the adjacent lots. So this can, the concludes the hearing. Notice of this decision will be mailed Thursday, June third, two thousand twenty one. The appeal period is twelve days from the date of mailing and will expire at four PM on Tuesday, June fifteenth, two thousand twenty one per ORS one nine seven point eight three zero. If no appeal is filed, the decision of the Planning Commission in this matter shall be final. Right. Thank you. Thank you. At this time, can we have the Planning Director's report?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to pause for a second and confirm with Jen C, our Planning Coordinator, whether or not there were past minutes to approve for today. I see it on the agenda, but I don't recall seeing it in the packet. Jen C available to confirm?
Yes, there are minutes from April.
They were, they were emailed.
Yes, alright. Approval of the minutes of April sixth, two thousand twenty one. Do we have any additions or corrections to those minutes?
No.
Okay, if not, could I have a motion?
I motion to, this is Commissioner Willis. I motion to approve the, the minutes as delivered and stated.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Abstain.
Who abstains? Vicki.
Vicki.
Okay. Motion carried, one abstention. Alright. Back to the Planning Director's report. You don't get out of it, Angie.
Ah, thank you, thank you. Alright, well, I have a few items of interest and I'm grateful for, for your guys' focused hearings this evening. I was thinking this might go late, late, late for us. So I'm glad that it's not yet five, but I'll try not to keep it too long. I'm happy to report we have successfully navigated this year's budget process. Our budget has been approved by the county's appointed budget committee. And it's for, it's for status quo, essentially. We have been able to maintain our staffing. The budget process changed a little bit this year, so we're more directly responsible for our funds as a general fund department and have a little bit more autonomy there, but also more directly responsible for bringing, bringing in our funds as much as possible. So stay tuned for that. You may hear more about that in the future as we give you updates about different grants. We're, we have a preliminary approval. Um, give you updates about different grants. We're, we have a preliminary approval from the DOD. For, uh, a grant here to update our, some of our notification procedures for things like. Oh, like wind towers and meteorological towers and things that are two hundred feet tall or so trigger different kinds of notifications for the military and, um. They were kind enough to entertain a grant proposal by us to add some language to our code to make sure we're doing that to the best of our ability and. Um, I don't wanna put Kelly on the spot, but if you have questions about that, Kelly is here and she's managing project and, uh, tip into that later if you'd like to. Um, so solid budget, which is great. Um. We also recently, um, were able to present, Kelly and I presented to LCDC last, oh gosh, was it a week ago already? It feels like it was last week, but it was the week before. It was the conclusion of our voluntary periodic review work. If you'll recall, they, the state had to acknowledge that process for us to pursue it. And so this was us coming back. Four years later with the end product, um, and being the first county to pursue that process in more than twenty years, they were eager to hear it. So it was. It felt really good to present a successful completion of that project. But it felt even better to hear them say that we are the very best planning program of, uh, all of eastern and central and some of, uh, western, uh. Uh, counties and cities for the state of Oregon and that they wish they could clone us and repeat our work in other places. So that felt really, really good. And I wanted to share that with you all and pat you all on the back for mission accomplished. We, we set out to be the, the best possible program we could and create the best possible plan for our residents we could and. And I feel like we did. So congratulations. That's great. And, uh, pretty soon you'll get to see a, a very beautiful version of that, uh, of that plan. We were able to find a, a few dollars to have a graphic designer, put a nice cover on it and do a little bit of. Formatting work and it looks beautiful. It's really nice to have that glossy product at the end of so much hard work. So stay tuned, you'll see some more about that. Um, but kudos to you all and they all for the years of support. And advocacy to the, to the board of county commissioners for budget support and showing up to all of our road shows. It's been, it's been a really wonderful experience and, um, kudos to Kelly for the heavy lift on as project manager and just. Years and years of continuous dedication and hard work. So. That's good. Um, I can share that we, um, have recently had some conversation, speaking of the board, uh, about our scenic area ordinance and how to pursue the gorge twenty twenty updates. To the management plan. Gorge twenty twenty, if you'll recall, is the project name that they have for their comprehensive plan update. If, if you may have noticed some contentious, um, headlines in, in newspapers and email blasts and things about the board's recent discussions, so feel free to ask me questions now. Or later, um, but I can briefly share with you that I have presented a couple of updates to the board, asking specifically for direction as to whether or not to pursue those gorge twenty twenty updates. Or not. I am required by our ordinance to confirm their support before we initiate any work. And I'm required to send some, a memo to the gorge commission indicating our, uh, intentions to adopt or not adopt by a certain timeline so that they. Can plan accordingly on their end as to whether or not there's any, any actions needed from them. And in my presentation to the board, I was specifically asked by, by several of them, uh, all of them actually, in other public meetings to include in my request to them. A summary of other departmental obligations and commitments and capacity constraints that we're dealing with now, so that they could have a more robust discussion. About what the implications were for the planning program. To pursue those twenty twenty updates and continue the implementation of our scenic area ordinance. And how the, how that topic was portrayed in the media, uh, there were, there were headlines and e-blasts. From, um, not, uh, from watchdog groups suggesting that. The county was looking to rescind its ordinance and give it back to the gorge commission and didn't want anything to do with it. And certainly that could have been an outcome of that discussion, but that wasn't the recommendation from staff and that wasn't the, that wasn't the reason for the discussion. The reason for the discussion was to have an honest. Conversation about how to proceed responsibly, given that we are currently litigating the forest service and the gorge commission for the outcome of that gorge twenty twenty process. And, um. Uh, at the time of the discussion, our, our grant from the state to implement that program had been reduced. It's, I'm happy to report it's been restored since then, but at one point it had been reduced due to state budget cuts. And we report annually that we use more than twice as much as we're provided to implement those rules every year. So it was really a, it was a. At the request of the commission to be prudent and fiscally responsible for our residents and to have a conversation about the pros and cons. Um, moving forward, it was never to sort of pull the rug out from underneath the residents or. Or, you know, just cut the program out completely. So the outcome of that conversation, we had a, a public, a public meeting on April twenty-first and then I believe it was. May, oh gosh, don't quote me. It was a, a meeting in May. And they confirmed direction that we would be working to add those gorge twenty twenty edits into our Wasco County scenic area ludo, our ordinance. Um, and I will be, they asked me to come back tomorrow with another mo, um, that. That confirms it's, it's scripted for their signature and they specifically requested that it state, we, we will be working to, um. Meet their timelines to adopt those provisions by the end of this calendar year. The deadline is December eleventh and we're a bit concerned about the timelines. Given this, the scope of the changes that need to be made in the public process, it still needs to be kicked off. Um. But, uh, I've been asked to also include a, a brief statement that suggests. The board would still like to explore conversations and pursue a, a, a parallel path of adding county regulations. In the areas, um, currently regulated for the scenic area to give us the option when we get there. So there may be, um. There may be an interesting discussion tomorrow with the board. I'll keep you all posted as to what the outcome of that is. I, I, my, well, I don't, I've learned not to, to hazard a guess as to what the outcome would be, but I, I will certainly post it as to what the outcome will be. So that's the scenic area topic. Before I keep going, are there any questions on that? That one got quite a bit of press and there was some, there was some significant concern raised. Hearing, then I'll keep going. Um, as you all know, Will Smith left our team a few weeks back and we're, I just wanted to let you all know that we will be pursuing recruitment here very shortly for the senior planner position. And that's moving along. Um. And I'm, I'm trying to think, I'm looking, I can, there's only three cameras on. Kelly, am I missing anything significant before I tip into other? Updates?
I mean, you can.
Do you wanna share anything scoping for long range?
Um, yeah, I could just share that the community wildfire protection plan, um, in Will's absence is continuing. I'm managing that project now. With the assistance of Isaac Stats, who's the long range assistant planner. And we're continuing to have those meetings. We've rolled out some preliminary, uh, public input survey that's available on the website. So if you haven't had a chance to take that, we recommend you do that. It's under CWPP on the Wasco County website. Also, we have now released all the drafts for this year's land use and development ordinance update. They're all available on the project website, wasco2040.com. Where, um, we've got a few months and, uh, to receive public feedback before we bring that before this body for a work session in August. Um, and we're hoping to have gotten a lot of public feedback so that we can make any tweaks and we can have a good, robust conversation, because it's a lot of material to go over. Um, and that's all I have to report. Thanks for the opportunity, Angie.
Would you mind sharing the letter of intent that's going to, before the board on the sixteenth for the.
Certainly.
Hazard funds?
Um, so based on conversations with one of our core group members. Uh, who's a chief of a rural fire protection district about some access issues. And it's also been identified as a key strategy in our natural hazards mitigation plan and our community wildfire protection plan from two thousand and five. Um, we are going to be applying to the state emergency, uh, emergency office. For funds, hazard mitigation funds to do a, um, flyover with drones of all publicly accessed roads to conduct an inventory and then do an assessment. And the hope of that, uh, there's lots of uses for that information, but the main hope is that we'll be able to identify very critical. Um, potential mitigation projects to really help us. You know, reduce, uh, difficult issues ahead of wildfires, but also. Uh, give our fire, our emergency responders good information about evacuations. Um. As, as we know, that's, you know, a really critical function during wildfire season. And that is, I'm going before the board at the, it's sixteenth of June and it's due to the state on July first.
Thanks, Kelly. All right, and my final update for you guys is, is a bit of a personal, um, personal share. Um, difficult to say out loud for me, uh, after almost seven years with Wasco County, my family's relocating to central Oregon. And as a result, I've, I'm pursuing a career growth opportunity. In central Oregon, um, which means that I will be leaving the Wasco County team, um, at the end of June. Um. This team has been everything to me and more, uh, for quite some time and I feel like we've accomplished a lot, grown a lot together. I know, see, I, I was hoping cameras would start coming on. It's really hard to say this to a bunch of names on a screen. Um. You all have been incredibly supportive to me with some pretty ambitious goals and you put your trust and, and faith in me and that. That is, uh. A once in a lifetime opportunity and I value it and will treasure it immensely for, forever. I've always said this is, you know, I kinda geeked out a little bit at staff meeting and the management team meeting when I shared this news that this is. It sounds geeky, but this has been a dream come true for me. I, I feel like the county took a big risk. You guys took a big risk. The team we built took a big risk on, on doing some of these ambitious things and coming together the way we did. And I'm just forever grateful. So, um. I'm, I'm excited for the opportunity for my family. I'm excited for the opportunity. I have, um, my next chapter, but goodness sakes, it's really hard to close this chapter. It's been wonderful and incredibly rewarding. I've grown a lot. And it's kind of breaking my heart to walk away. So I hope you all stay in touch and maybe, you know, we can schedule some, some phone calls or a coffee, coffee dates before my last day. Um. But, uh, so you will certainly be hearing more about this in the next few weeks and, uh, you have some hearings on the calendar that, that I unfortunately. Won't be joining you for, but I'll be with you all in spirit and, uh. Really, really proud of Wasco County and, and the work we've done together and, uh. I feel like we should have made a mascot or something. In case y'all don't know, we call ourselves the unicorns. We should, uh, we should somehow brand something with the unicorn. We can. Go, go team. I'll stop there. I hate talking about myself. I'm gonna ramble forever, but I, I just am deeply appreciative of all of you and, um, just wanna thank you from the bottom of my heart. And, and please don't be a stranger. I'll share my personal contact info with you all and, and hope we can keep in touch.
Well, we.
Congratulations and it's been an honor and, uh, it's. Wasco County is very lucky to have you. And so are we.
Yes. We will miss you.
Thank you, thank you. It's been a crazy week of sharing this with everybody. I still need to send an announcement to all of my colleagues and, uh, wanted to make sure. Shared it with you guys and staff and the county organization first and. Um. Didn't wanna do it in an email.
Happy for your new adventure, your next adventure in life, um, your career, but you'll be sorely missed. I got you on speed dial.
Yes, you do. Please do. I'll miss you guys. Thank you.
Big loss, Angie, and, uh, I have nothing nice to say to you.
That's okay. I'm sure I'll hear it later. You can tell me later. So with that, those are my, those are my directors' comments for this evening and, um, this is my final hearing with you all. So thank you, thank you. Don't be a stranger.
Many congratulations.
Thank you.
Talk soon.
Yes, definitely. Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you. Great job, staff, for, uh. All the hard work that, that has been accomplished and the great, uh. Kudos from DLCD.
Thank you. We'll send you the audio from LCDC. It's, it's pretty, it's pretty amazing. If I could frame it somehow, I would, like, it's, I wanna preserve, preserve it forever somehow. Very flattering. All right, thank you.
Any, any final comments before we depart ways here? Okay.
I move to adjourn. Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll see you.